Let's come to order, welcome to our board meeting. The pledge tonight will be led by Mr. Terry Hollis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. On the agenda, we'd like to move up. What number is that? Yeah, let's move eleven unless there's objection, let's move that up to... Yeah. Anyone object to that?
No.
Yeah. So I guess we need... Gosh, if we want to be particular, we need a motion to do that, so...
Second.
All in favor, say aye. I'll say no, so on the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda.
In discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
In discussion, we had considerable discussion on some of these topics last night at our work session. Happy to listen to any other conversation about it. Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Now, Mr. Gill, number eleven.
Naming Oakland High School Baseball Complex pursuant to 3.210, the director may make recommendations to the board for naming a portion of school campus. That said, I want to read some information I have pertaining to Coach Jolly, Coach Jack Jolly. I'd say that I had good distinct pleasure to be able to speak at Mr. Bud Rakes's Sunday celebration of Rotary and get to speak about Coach Jolly. It's...to speak of two legends in the same week is quite an honor and I certainly consider Coach Jolly that. Coach Jolly began building the Oakland High School Baseball Program literally from the ground up with the opening of the school in 1972. At that time, since there was no field at the school, the team practiced at Oakland, Bay Bruce Field, the VA Hospital, and on the blacktop at Oakland High School, and in the Cox Memorial Gym. Eventually, he selected an area of land on school grounds and had it scraped off to begin a field in 1975. This was more of a place to practice than play. The teams actually began playing there in 1979. Boys on the team had to rake rocks before every game to smooth the dirt and prepare the field. There was no grass on the infield. Money was finally given for dugouts and a fence that year. For that, games were being played at the VA Hospital at Oakland's Bay Bruce Park. The team played district games and regional games on the other schools' fields until Oklahoma at Smyrna. They were allowed to play two games on MPSU's baseball field. Jack coached thirteen and a half years at Oakland and laid the foundation for the baseball program at the school. We all know how, what a program they have. During that time, his teams won five district championships, three regionals, and were defeated twice in the substates. Their record stands 151 wins, 130 losses. When he retired, he had a 20-win, 17-record against Riverdale, their biggest rival. Among the players he coached, 24 attended colleges and scholarships, two played professionally and one made it to the major leagues. Some of his honors are Rutherford County Hall of Fame, Old Timbers Baseball, 1989, Tennessee Baseball Coaches Association Hall of Fame, 1999, Nashville Old Timbers Mister Baseball Award, 2005, and Oakland High School Football Hall of Fame, 2009. State of Tennessee House of Representatives Joint Resolution Number Thirty honoring him in 1999 for his contribution to baseball. He's been a professional staff scout two years with the Montreal Expos and 21 years with the Chicago White Sox. Jack Jolly has been involved in baseball for 66 years as a player, a coach, and at present time, a professional scout. And I personally think he is quite deserving of the honor we're about to bestow on him and hopefully. And I would recommend to the board that we approve the naming of Oakland's Baseball Complex to be the Jack Jolly Stadium and the Mack Hawk Field.
So move.
Second.
Any board member have something to say? I know a couple of you played for Coach Jolly, at least one of you.
He's well-deserving, Mr. Jolly.
He put up with you, that was a pretty good statement of his character right there.
He put up with a lot of them.
Anybody else have any comment?
Congratulations.
Very well-deserved honor, we're proud that you're here and happy to take this step. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Congratulations. Yes, sir, if you want to say something, please come up to...
Can I say something?
Please do, and if you come up to the mic, the folks on TV can hear.
Makes all damn cry. If he the first guy ever cried in front of the county school board.
I really...really, I'm so humbled about this, I don't know that the words will really come out. I was fortunate in my lifetime to have coached the greatest bunch of kids that you could ever hope for. I even had a football player at Smyrna High School named Joe Gill. And his family has evidently done well because of all of his achievements and his intelligence. But I do owe everything that I have to the former players that I've had. And this is really much more deeper feelings than I thought that I'd ever have in my lifetime. It really is...I don't want to cry, but it really does touch me deeply, and I thank the Board of Education for this honor and for the opportunity that you have given me. And I go back to so many of you. Jim, it there. Mr. Gill, right here, probably the worst thing I ever remember was 1967, I was coaching at Smyrna High School in football, and I was the defensive coordinator. And Mr. Bud Rakes was the head coach at Smyrna, and they had two running backs that ran freely all night long. One of them had about a, I guess, a run of about 65 yards for a touchdown, and the other than about a 73-yard touchdown. And I will pay honor to him, he is now the superintendent. Now, that kind of detracts to me what kind of a coach I was. All honors that I have received, I owe to the players. Thank you, Harry. Thank all of you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's right.
Okay, I think we're ready for number seven.
Oh, business supplemental pay recommendations for approval on, to approve the request of the county department to place only those supplements over $500 on the consent agenda for approval.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to say that we might not have it exactly right with this, but it has come a long way since first start with it. So I think tonight, we can put it to bed and maybe we can evaluate what we've done, and then if changes need to be done, maybe we can look at those down the road.
That's a good point. We spent a lot of time on this, and this is a step in the right direction. If we need to adjust later, we can adjust. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Number eight.
Approval of general studies career path for students with disabilities. Students entering high school in 2009 and later are required to complete an elective focus to graduate. State Board Policy states, students will complete an elective focus of no less than three credits. The elective focus may be CTE, science and math, humanities, fine arts, AP, IB, or other areas approved by the local Board of Education. The Rutherford County Special Education Department is seeking Rutherford County School Board approval of a general studies career path for some students with disabilities. Use of the pathway would require an IEP team decision for the student to participate in this pathway. Their proposed focus area to be used by students on the modified high school diploma path would allow students to study basic business and work skills needed to be successful in the workplace. The proposed general studies career pathway would include options for the following courses. Introduction to Self Advocacy, one credit, focus on adulthood or planning for transition, one credit. Exploration of Marketing and Management, a half-credit. Business Basics, a half-credit. Reading and the Content Area, a half-credit. And Work-Based Learning or Career Prep, up to three credits. Recommend that you approve General Studies Career Path for Students with Disabilities.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Aaron.
I'd just like to say, I think this is a great example of taking some state requirements and adapting them here to our local needs. I want to compliment Mr. Gill and Ms. Bell for what they've done here. I think this is really going to help us.
Thank you. Other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Number nine, A.
What were we on, nine, nine-eight?
Nine-eight, yes, sir.
Facilities, Blackman High School Baseball Field Scoreboard. Before we go there, I thought it was pretty interesting as I read the story on Coach Jolly back in 72, how they had to, what they had to do to have a ball field, which I don't quite remember that far back, although I should, but, you know, it kind of...they were a little spoiled these days.
It'd come a long way.
We have to come out and rake rocks and do those kind of things, but that, I just thought it was interesting as we kind of went into this to what they used to have to do.
Of course, we pay supplements to people to do that now, don't we?
We did. It wasn't that good a joke. Facilities, okay. Blackman High School Baseball Field Scoreboard. Let me recompose it. Blackman High School Principal Ms. Gail Vick has requested permission to purchase a new scoreboard and replace the existing scoreboard at the baseball field at the school. Cost of the new scoreboard with shipping is $10,737 and would be furnished by varsity scoreboards and funded at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Recommend that you approve the purchase of a new baseball field scoreboard as presented by Blackman High School at no cost to the board.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. B.
Blackman Middle School Outdoor Classroom. Blackman Middle School Principal Mr. Will Shelton has requested permission to construct an outdoor classroom at the school. It will be built of pressure-treated pine and accommodate approximately 35 students. It will consist of three rows of seating and a lattice divider fence. It will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board. Blackman Middle School will be responsible for all permits and construction following all state and local codes. Recommend that you approve construction of a 35-feet, 35-seat outdoor classroom at Blackman Middle School at no cost to the board.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted.
Homer Peter Campus School Project Completion. Rutherford County School Board is required to complete the remaining items for the current Homer Peter Campus School contract by August 30, 2012, as defined in the agreement with Middle Tennessee State University. Staff has been working with Hawk Mechanical and CIC Construction Contractors for early phases of the project to formulate a final construction cost and timeframe for work per the agreement. The final phases of work involve replacing the plumbing piping system inside the building, making all restrooms ADA compliant, remove and replace the front concrete stairs and handrails, lowering the old chimney to rooftop level, and installing blinds on the windows. This work will begin during Christmas break 2011 and will continue to be accomplished at night, with the balance of the work being completed during spring break 2012. Contractor will start with the top-level restrooms and work their way to the ground level under a construction management agreement. Staff has included $400,000 in this year's capital project budget for this final phase of work. Hawk Mechanical has assembled a construction budget of $389,000 for the work. Recommend that you approve Hawk Mechanical as construction manager for the completion of the renovations at Homer Peter Campus School per the board's agreement with MPSU, an amount of $389,000. The work will be funded through the 2011-2012 capital project budget.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? You said last night, this is the end of a long process of renovation of campus school. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted.
You know, it'd be interesting, now, Gary, what, since we started on that project a few years back, can you recall pretty much everything we've done? I'm putting you on the spot.
Well, we basically remodeled the entire inside of the building, putting new electrical systems in it, new fire protection inside it, done a bunch of painting, put an elevator in it to make it handicapped accessible, disabled accessible, and done work around the outside, replaced the heating and cooling system. And of course, this stage will finish up everything that we're in agreement with, with MPSU, which means redoing the front entry and replacing the plumbing. And I would say that we spent in the neighborhood about $4.8 million there.
Did you mention windows? Did we replace all the windows?
Yes.
I thought you did, yeah.
Last year.
Thought so, yeah.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
D.
Riverdale High School Football Storage Building. Riverdale Principal Mr. Tom Nolan's requesting permission to construct a 20-by-50 all-feet, all-metal storage building under the existing home stadium bleachers. It will be, it will be used to store mowing and grass grooming equipment. Football Booster Club will be responsible for all permits and will build the building according to all state and local codes. Building will be constructed at no cost to the board. Recommend that you approve construction of a 20-by-50 metal storage building under the existing home stadium bleachers at Riverdale High School at no cost to the board.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. E.
Blackman Elementary School Outdoor Classroom. Blackman Elementary School Principal Cynthia Ford has requested permission to construct an outdoor classroom at Blackman Elementary School. The classroom will consist of seating, overhead trellis, a raised instructor platform and landscaping. Staff has reviewed the plan and site. Blackman Elementary School PTO will construct the classroom at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board and conform to all permitting, state and local codes. Recommend that you approve construction of an outdoor classroom at Blackman Elementary School by the PTO at no cost to the board as presented.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Tim is our board member appointment to the Tennessee Legislative Network and the Federal Relations Network, which are our TSBA-related organizations that help us track and advocate legislation regarding schools. Aaron.
I'd like to make a motion after some consideration that we appoint Wayne Blair to both the Tennessee Legislative Network and the Federal Relations Network.
Sure.
Any other nominations or motions? Any discussion? Dr. Jackson?
Aaron. I just wanted to be on record that we, we really looked at this. I had conversations with chairman and also with Wayne and Tim. There are a lot of things going on legislatively in education right now. He's really active, and I think Wayne's experience here is very valuable to Rutherford County. And at the same time, we did consider, you know, is it appropriate for us to spread the responsibility between two different individuals or something like that so that we make sure that we have longevity of experience in the board? I think it's important, particularly this coming session with the legislation that TSBA has indicated to us, that we may see that Wayne fill that role, and I really appreciate his diligence in that.
Thank you, I think we all agree with that. Tim?
And I think also to add to that is a willingness to serve, and I think that's, I think it's really important to what, have an interest to serve, and I don't know that the rest of us would want to say we don't have that interest, but I think Wayne's clearly exhibited that he, that he does. I think that's important to have that.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no, motion's adopted. Wayne, thank you for being willing to take that on again.
Thank you for letting me serve.
Brings us to general discussion. Terry.
I just like, I got to think about what we discussed last night, I think Mr. Tackett brought it up, but, well, about the letter Mr. Gill sent to the teachers asking for feedback on evaluation, stuff like that, and I think several teachers getting this letter from Representative Walmit. I take it Ms. Barnes is probably, you're going to probably take those comments and somehow compile them. What I'd like to see you do, because I don't, I don't know how many of the board members really know what needs to, what the evaluation needs to be like, other than, I think the best feedbacks you get from the teachers, but I'd like to see you possibly get with REA also on that and get their feedback and then compile something and send it to all the local delegation. And basically, it'll be what the teachers expect out of the evaluation. I ventured to guess, it doesn't appear the first time they, that they took any feedback, we probably didn't give any. So this is our opportunity to do it, so, you know, I'd like to see us, you know, move forward and get something to them, they're asking for it.
Sounds okay with you, Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Aaron.
I've heard a number of people, both here at the central office and faculty members, speak of the thoroughness of the evaluation, and so I would want to say, when Mr. Tackett penned his letter from the board and we all approved that and sent that on, we were careful to say that there's a evaluation of the evaluation, you know, to reconsider some of the points. There are some things in this that are good that we want to, I would hope, highlight as well as point out those areas that need reconsideration.
Wayne, since we took the race to the top, first to the top, whichever one you want to call, you know, the state committed to the evaluation process, so that's there, it rocks solid, but as Mr. Tackett said, if there could be some modification, that's what we would support.
Well, the point I was raising last night, I think that, I think that's kind of where we're headed, but it is important that we not only recognize or make the statement that we don't particularly agree with it because of what teachers said, of what we do think those recommendations should be. If, if that could be, once it's compiled and so forth, I would like to see us, at some point, I don't know if we can get this done without board action next meeting and so forth, but at some point in time, I'd like to see the board follow up with letter one with what we think are appropriate recommendations to take place. I think that's, I think that's what Aaron may be kind of alluding to, and if there's a way we can, can do that and get that through from the board, I think that would be the right thing to do.
Yeah. Well...
I guess, and I understand, I guess where I'm coming from, make sure we hear...
Sure.
Make sure we hear what our teachers are telling us, is to relay or somebody to relay what, you know, because they're the ones going through it more, I guess.
You know, what we did request was that they gave us the pros and cons, recognizing, like Aaron said, there are some good things that are coming out of that evaluation. Of course, there's some things that they don't like and we don't like, so, you know, we want to, you know, hit them with a little kindness before we hit them with our concerns too, so if it wants to come, if it comes from the board, that's great, or if you want us to just compile those comments, I think it may be what Terry said, is send it all to the legislature, that's fine too, whatever you're, whatever you desire.
I don't, what's the board's wish on that, we should certainly get a copy of it, I don't, I don't know if we want to...
I don't think we have to approve it.
I don't, I don't think it's an approval, it's more of an informational, or we can do however the majority wants.
Just know what they said.
Yeah. Okay. Other general discussion?
Just real quick, you know, the boosters, the booster clubs have been in the news and the media quite a bit, and maybe the light wasn't as pleasant at that time, but looking at all the things we approved tonight, that family and stakeholders contribute to that we as a board cannot spend on these campuses, and I just would like for us to continue to be grateful and, and, you know, let the booster programs know how much we appreciate, you know, the financial investment they make in these, in these schools, and also, you know, the painting, the cleaning, and the repairs that they do, you know, in their program, and just continue to tell them how much, how grateful we are for their investment.
I agree. Aaron.
Along those same lines, I'd like to highlight the reading in schools program that'll take place tomorrow. I know up in my area, Mayor Mosley and I both are reading at a elementary school tomorrow, and I'm sure others are also participating, so all the community involvement in the reading in schools program from the board, we certainly want to extend our appreciation to that.
Mr. Gill, you said you had an item...
Two things, we have our, first I want to say a word about our United Way Drive. We've been recognized and honored several times over the last few years, and I know how appreciative United Way is of our, all our employees across county, central office and teachers. We've had a contest going, taking place this week. If you get a chance when you leave, maybe you can walk through the building and look at some of the doors that have been decorated. These guys really took us to heart, I mean, it got extremely competitive, and it was actually judged today. And not only was it interesting, but we had people dress up, and, I mean, it was a spirited event, and it goes back to James, James has headed that up for us, he's shown real leadership, and then I think anybody over there would agree, contributed immensely to that success. Also, Saturday, we have our, you want to speak to it, our academic...
Parent Academy.
Academy, Saturday, yeah. And it's at three different sites. James, just give a real quick wrap-up on that, please. James? You'll be speaking to an MP already.
We have our first parent academy on Saturday, it's going to be held at Siegel Smyrna High School and Rockville Middle School. We've had more than 1,000 participants register, we actually expect that some of those may not actually... We actually expect that some of those may not actually follow through with their registration. But I think Metro had a couple of three hundred there last time. They've been doing it for three years. So this is our first year. We feel like we, you know, beat them on that part at least, right? So we're pretty happy about that. We had more than seventeen hundred parents reply to our survey to give us feedback on what kind of session should be offered, and we tailored it to those, to that feedback. So Mr. Gill's speaking at Smyrna High School, Mr. Odom's at Segal, and Ms. Barnes is speaking at Rockville. I know that a number of board members are attending, so we're looking for a good day. Hope everything goes fine. So any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Samples of the kinds of courses or classes that are...
Sure. One of the most popular ones that we saw in the survey was High School 101. It just talks about the different course offerings, the pathways, how to find financial aid for college, things like that, how to help your child with elementary and math, reading. I've already seen the handouts and the presentations for those. It looked really good. We've got a session on bullying, and Paula's got some of her counselors doing that. Was a popular session because it's a very common topic.
Mentioned the two...
Online textbooks. That was a big one.
James, mentioned the outside agencies that are participating free of charge.
We have two agencies. One is going to be presenting at Smyrna High School. It's Learning RX. It's a company here that provides some, some different types of parenting workshops. They're doing a session on cognitive skills. They've agreed to do that free of charge. The Exchange Club, Family Center, they're doing a session on parenting skills that we held at Rockville Middle School. And then Coordinated School Health, which is actually one of our programs, but we only have two people in that program. So they're presenting at Segal High School on ways to help your children be healthy and for parents, you know, be concerned with those kids' wellness. So you got to, all the sessions are the same at all the schools except for those three. Those three are special sessions each one.
Sounds good. We'll be interested to hear a report after this.
Okay.
It's our next move. I've got two housekeeping matters. One, you see before you the schedule of board meetings through January. So enter that in your calendars. And then secondly, we have the board's self-evaluation. So, and we know Wayne's already given himself an A-plus, but the rest of us...
He hasn't even opened the envelope yet.
We did this a year or two ago, so it's not an incredibly onerous task, but we do ask that you spend a few minutes thinking about it. And I believe, as I recall, the instructions are pretty clear-cut. There are no right or wrong answers, so don't have to worry about passing. What'll happen is Joyce will collate this information. I don't think that, what do we decide on getting them back? By next Thursday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
And if you can't get them back, just call me and I'll have somebody pick them up.
So stick it in the mail or bring it by or, or Joyce can...
Call me and get it back.
Are you okay with that? And so we'll have the results of that at our next meeting, and that'll be on our agenda to discuss what we come up with. Anything else? We adjourn.